Call to me back to order. And continue in open session now and begin and welcome everybody tonight to the regular board meeting for the school district of Amory and start with our spotlight on education. Ms. Badman, there she is.
Okay, we are right at the top. All right, I brought with me a bunch of fine, they're gonna be have to reveal, this is only so far.
Can you somebody please?
Oh, sure. Love to.
I brought with me one of the groups that is going to be performing in Footloose. We are working on the musical Footloose. We are down to 10 rehearsals and counting, starting tonight is 10 and it goes down from there. Our performances are November 10th, 11th, and 12th. It'll be out more on social media, the tickets are available at Chet's and at the high school. This is a group of guys that are singing a song called Mama Says. And Ren, if you know anything about Footloose, dancing has been banned in the town of Beaumont and Ren has come there, who is Bennett Helly, and he is in disbelief that this is going on and he's being encouraged to approach the town council to change this law. And in this song, he is trying to, Willard, Gus Wentz, who is pretty much gonna be singing this song for you, and with his backup group, is trying to give him words of encouragement that his mama has said through him throughout the years. And I think that kinda sets the stage for the song, so they're gonna all come up here. We have Bennett as Ren, Bennett Helly as Ren, Zach Swenson is a character named Travis, Sam Fernangle is Lyle, Bauer Panic is Bickle, Jackson Henningsguard is Jeter, Gus is Willard, and Aramis Espinoza is Garvin in the play. So they're gonna come up and sing Mama Says.
Everything I ever learned that gets me through the worst, I learned at my mama's knee. Now anytime I'm turned around, I turn to mama first. And you'd be wise to memorize what mama says to me. Now mama ain't been wrong yet, and I am the living proof.
It's kind of a Freddy thought, isn't it?
Now listen up. Mama says don't use a toaster while standing in a shower. Now who could argue with that? Mama says don't hold your breath for longer than an hour. The woman knows where it's at. And mama says it doesn't matter if you're a king or you're a clown. Once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down.
You can't back down, Ren.
Now Ren, you haven't had the pleasure of meeting my mama, but these boys have, probably out here, fellas. Mama says don't drink hot coffee lying down in bed. Don't even give it a thought.
It's a mess, mama says.
Never eat anything that's bigger than your head. Is she a wiz or what?
Oh yes.
And mama says it doesn't matter if you're a king or you're a clown. Once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down. Oh, once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down. Now mama makes a lot of sense if you no longer listen to me, Ren.
She's concise.
Daddy says I love her son, but he's got my was missing, but I say, hey, it's free advice. And what do you expect out that prize?
Will it make your mama to give my speech?
Oh, heck no. Mama, everybody thinks mama's crazy, but that's not the point. The point is she's got some words worth hearing. Hear me now. If what you believe in is all you really own, and I believe that she's right. If you've got doubts, boy, you're not alone. Just means you're ready to fight. And mama says it doesn't matter if you drive a hard bargain or drive around town. Once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down. Once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down. That's my mama. I thought of one more thing. Now mama says, don't buy a chandelier unless you've got a ceiling. I don't know what that's about. Now mama says, don't chew on tinfoil unless you like the feeling. Somehow she figured that out. And mama says it doesn't matter if you're a king or you're a clown. Once you drive up a mountain, remember boy, everybody's counting on you. Once you drive up a mountain, you can't back down. Now, don't make me say it again.
Thank you for having us. Come to the show, hopefully that entices you. Hopefully that entices you.
Good job, Cass.
Nice job, Mrs. Badman.
Cass does more accuracy.
Best part of the night, every night. All right, move on to the agenda before we get too far into it, just a statement. We were, item number 11 was a hearing regarding employment of support staff. We did receive notification from the attorney for staff member that they want to withdraw that, so we will move that off the agenda. And we'll go on to the consent agenda items.
I had that and I would make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Community comments?
Did you sign in?
I did.
All right, you're on. Just reminder, five minutes and you know the rules, I don't need to...
I wrote the rules.
Can we turn a light on? Yeah, that would probably help.
My name is Cory Nelson and I had the privilege of working with the school district in the district office for 25 years. I retired under good terms in February of 2016 and I, recent actions have caused me to reflect on the board policies. And there is one in particular that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, just in case that this hasn't been reviewed recently. Policy number 150, it's entitled Board Powers and Responsibilities. And if you don't mind, I'll read the first paragraph. The responsibilities of the board of education are to serve as a policymaking body, operate the district as required by state law, operate within the laws of the state of Wisconsin, and do all other duties reasonable for the performance of public education. In particular, I would like for you to review item number eight, require all staff members to comply with state laws, board policies, and DPI directives. In summary, right is right, wrong is wrong, and there is never an excuse for repeated wrongs. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Anyone else? Okay.
We'll move along. Administrative reports, Mr. Cookedoff.
Okay, I just wanted to note that since the September board meeting, I attended the state education conference in Madison, September 20th through the 22nd, and had a good conference with state superintendent Tony Evers and most superintendents around the state. September 26th, we had a Department of Workforce Development, the Department of Workforce Development Secretary and Governor Walker visit, which Mr. Durfle had alluded to, I believe, previously at the last meeting, and recognition for Youth Apprenticeship Day on that day for Amory, the Amory program. On October 10th, we had the Family Consumer Science Open House that was held and good attendance for that event, as well as Youth Recreation Night where there were hundreds of adults and young future participants signing up. And Wednesday, October 25th, this coming Wednesday, the Amory Lions will be making a donation to the district for Makerspaces in the amount of nearly $2,000. So that's a check that I'll be receiving this Wednesday.
Great.
Well, I did also want to give a shout out to our individual state tennis players, and I'm gonna miss names now, Olivia.
And Allison.
And Allison, thank you. And also cross-country, June Ingram, good luck to her, and also the state tennis team, being the only public school in the state tournament. They competed this past Saturday, and also good luck to soccer on their way to state.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a couple items. Jim stole two of them, but I'm gonna reiterate. Yes, the governor was here last month and we are very proud to have him here. We have 49 youth apprentices and we have some 250 kids that would even be eligible for that, so we got one in five kids is out in the workforce in some fashion. So fantastic recognition for all of us. Couple of other items. Adam Jerko will be here as our keynote speaker for our Veterans Day ceremony on November 10th. It's a Friday, November 11th is technically Veterans Day, but it would be hard to get the kids here on November 11th. I can sure you imagine how hard that would be. Fall athletics, congratulations to Jude for his accomplishments in qualifying for state girls tennis, and we're not done yet. I won't jinx anybody, but we play this Thursday evening soccer against Rice Lake here and we'll see how that goes, and then perhaps Saturday, and we'll see what happens after that. And lastly, you'll hear more about this when we get to our performance report, but ACT scores are in statewide. There are 546 high schools, we were 21st out of the 546, first in the CISA, not only composite, but every single subject area besides math, we were second. What are you gonna do? And we were first in the conference and in most cases significantly so. So good things happening. K-12, because that's a K-12 accomplishment, that's just a high school thing. So, thank you.
A couple things going on right now district-wide. We have people running all over the place in various committees, initiatives going on. I think we're just gonna talk about PLCs and what's going on there. We just did some peer mediator training at the intermediate and middle school last week. We had Mike McGowan come in. If you don't know Mike McGowan, he serves a lot of different school districts in this area and does a really nice job relating to kids. What peer mediation is, is teaching specific students who are trained to handle and mediate problems for their peers, self-explanatory, I guess. They do a really nice job and it's a nice way for us to kinda give them some problems that they can handle that are maybe minor in level, but it also helps the kids come to an agreement quickly and most of those carry through really well. So we're excited that that training took place. We have Dramarama coming up, which is one of our gifted and talented programs, getting ready for young actors who then can grow up and come and perform at the school board meeting. That's on November 4th at Baldwin-Woodville. Laura Shogren, are we in Baldwin or Woodville that day? We're in Woodville at Viking Middle School, okay. And then our bully-proofing program is our 13th year here in Amory. It's been a program that has been recognized statewide. I've presented at OSA conferences on it before. And we're real excited to start that six-part series on November 13th and carry out and try to teach our kids about standing up for each other and doing what's right. We do a bully-proofing month coming up in October, November. And then we have some PBIS training going on, and I think Cheryl is probably gonna talk about that, because she's kinda cheering that part. So that's some of the things going on in the district.
Okay, I'm gonna jump right in with, we had our district PLC, which is professional learning communities, met last Wednesday night, all district curriculum committees. So everyone met and working on the identification of essential standards. We started that process last year and are just finishing up with that. On November 3rd, Chris Stratton will be back and she will be wrapping up the whole essential standard part and then applying it to the next thing that she's gonna train us on, which is formative assessments on those essential standards. So we're all looking forward to that. This Friday night is the 14th Annual Hoedown here at the intermediate school, so that should be a lot of fun. We have middle school and high school kids that are helping us put that on. And then after that, or sometime in between when mine starts, is the Hootenanny, so don't forget that. The women's club is putting on a Hootenanny and the proceeds will go to innovative grants here at the Amory Public School.
Okay, I'm going to just share some of the October highlights at Leon. First of all, we have parent-teacher conferences in October and we had 97.6% attendance in our grades K through second, which was very good, up 2.2% higher than last year, so I was excited about that. We also, this past week, had a Title I parent breakfast in the morning. We had a parent meeting and we served the children and the families breakfast. And along with that, they learned about how nonfiction stories are fabulous, and that was led by our Title I program. We had about 80 people in attendance, so we were very happy with that turnout. I wanna thank the board for giving Ms. Shock and myself the opportunity to attend our elementary principal conference. They ran it a little bit differently this year, where the whole morning was focused on, they had just one keynote speaker, and his whole focus was on self-reflection and all professionals reflecting on their practice. And he gave us a continuum to use with our staff for self-reflection, because everybody is at a different stage. And so it's something that both Ms. Shock and I are excited to implement with our staff. It's laid out very well and it wasn't just that, you know, 45-minute or hour and a half little meeting, it was all morning and then the end of the conference. He was also the keynote, so thank you for that opportunity in Green Bay. And our Halloween parade is scheduled for next Tuesday. That's one of our most popular events at Leon Elementary School and you're all welcome to attend. Our parade will begin at 2:15 and Ms. Shock, I believe yours is before us at?
1:45.
1:45. So you're all welcome to participate, but do not bring any sword, play, swords or guns, and if parents dress up, please dress up in friendly costumes. Thank you.
I have a couple items to share with you. November 9th and 13th, from 2:30 to 6:30 at the public library, we'll be doing child find activities. And what that is, is the school district of Amory provides screening for preschool children that includes hearing, vision, speech and language, and general development. So if you have not gotten a postcard or gotten any information about the screening and your child has not been screened before, they're welcome to come to that screening. It's always a very good turnout and a really great activity to participate in. I also wanted to share with the board, every five years, we're required to do what's called procedural compliance monitoring self-assessment in special education. This is our year to go through that. Areas that are evaluated include how we do evaluations, how we do IEPs, how we implement our IEPs, and how we handle discipline in the area of special ed. We have a committee that will also take a look at graduation and dropout rates of students with disabilities, looking at parent satisfaction surveys, post-secondary outcome surveys, policies and procedures and practices that we feel might, we might need to take another look at. We are through with procedural compliance, which means we've gone through our paperwork and we'll be submitting that on November 15th. Then we sit down and we really talk about what are the training issues and what else do we need to do as a department to ensure that we're doing best practices. So that's one piece that I really felt you would be interested in. Tom mentioned PBIS, and yes, the district is really off to a gallop. They've done a really terrific job in implementing what's called Tier One Universal Practices and Behavioral Supports. This year, on September 20th, we sent three teams to Eclair to do what's called Tier Two Training, which means an extra layer of support. And again, we'll be having those teams go on October 25th, and then we have some people who need to go and do a refresher course in Tier One, which is at CISA. So the whole district is strongly involved in the PBIS initiative and has done a really awesome job.
And PBIS stands for?
It stands for Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that was good to ask.
Ms. Shock?
Then we also, could I do the check to Mr. Boyd at this time?
Is that legit? It's okay. We're always about doing checks.
All right.
We can make that happen.
Okay, so I have a check in my hand and Mr. Boyd, Chris Boyd is the one that applied for the grant, and so come on up, Chris. And this is from the Everwood Farmstead Foundation, and I'll just read a brief part of the letter. And it says, Dear Principal Shock, on behalf of the Everwood Farmstead Foundation, I am pleased to inform you that Christopher Boyd has been awarded an Aspiring Artist Grant. Enclosed is a check made out to the Amory Intermediate Band Program for the amount of $1,406.45 to be used to purchase musical instruments for students that are unable to afford them. And so I'll just let Chris maybe give you a little bit of a background on why he applied for the grant or how he found out about it.
Hello, my name is Christopher Boyd. I'm the band director and music teacher, one of the music teachers here at the intermediate school. I actually found out about the grant from an email from Ms. Shock, sent it to the music department. And I, we were kind of in the middle of starting up the band program in the spring, or in the fall, rather, my goodness. And every year when we come to band sign up, we have almost always two or more students say, you know, I wanna do band, but I can't, my parents say I can't afford it, it's too expensive. And we, Ms. Engian, the middle school band director, and I had talked about this, and so I thought this was an opportunity to start addressing that, because we had talked about, you know, we wanna address it, but we don't have the funds in our budget, and this is a way to maybe help that and supplement the instruments we have available for those students. And so we've been talking about what would be the most beneficial to purchase and kind of trying to find the best deals on instruments that are quality but not overly expensive.
The reason it's such a strange amount is they had a special night where they invited all of the people that belong to the Everwood Farmstead Foundation, and they put money into a collection, and so that's why it's a little bit interesting amount. But we're very proud of Chris for doing that, and I will make sure that it gets deposited into the fifth grade band program. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, Mr. Boyd, before you leave, I don't think anybody on the board has had a chance to, I just wanted to tell you that the band performances at the football games this year were terrific. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was, they were there a lot, which was really cool, and 50 Cal was as good as it gets. There's not many people my age that know Eminem songs. Yep. There's not many people my age who know Eminem when they hear it, but we're there. But I just wanted, at least on behalf of me, and I think I could speak for everybody, to say how pleased and what a wonderful job your students did this year, and that's a credit to you.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure they hear that as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
So that was informational items, C, check off.
Check off. All right, well, we're good on that.
I kept looking, I didn't see.
No, that's fine. It's good that Mr. Boyd, he's probably got...
Thank you, Ms. Shock.
...class in the morning anyway, so.
I'm surprised.
No, you're, okay, well, good. Can I leave? All right, we can move on to, are we done with the administrative reports? I did wanna make one quick mention administratively, just that I did go to the WASB Policy and Procedure Meeting, and there's like 12 different policies that they're going through that Chelsea will love to hear all about when it gets to be delegate time. So we do have one more meeting, but just to highlight, on the 3rd of November, whatever that Saturday is, it is the Legislative Advocacy Conference for the WASB, if anybody wants to go. I'm kinda planning on being there, depending on how, what would happen with our sporting teams, but... We hope you can't. Huh? We hope you can't go. Yeah, I hope I can't go, but we do have a spot there, so if anybody wants to go, let me know.
What day is it?
It's the 3rd, the first Saturday in November. It's an all-day deal in Stevens Point.
November 4th.
Yeah. But Luther Olson, all those guys are all there, so. So there's that. And next year, somebody else can volunteer for the policy and procedures, because y'all know how much I love that. All right, moving on to our informational items. First off, a strategic plan update.
Mr. Cookedoff? Or whom? Well, we have the administrative team that's presenting information, so starting with Ms. Meyer. And this is actually part of the...
Did I miss something? Summer school?
Yeah, I think we missed summer school.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Shogren, I did...
I'm on summer story.
Doggone.
I saw that, but I didn't see my...
Huh? You know, it is, I'm gonna blame it on the computer. Oh, yeah. I can't see the whole screen. And my, yeah. Anything else I can blame it on other than me?
Hello, I'm Laura Shogren, and I had the privilege of leading Amory's summer school this past summer, and I wanted to take a moment to tell you what things were and what things will be. So minutes of instruction really grew this year. The pupil minutes, and you'll have to, let's see, and you're running the clicker, yes. Okay. So the pupil minutes last year were just over 3 million, and we went up to a little over 4 million. You put an English teacher in charge of numbers, words are my forte, we need to insert another eight after the first one. So it's over 4 million, so our increase in minutes was over 64, 640,000, which was, I thought that...
That was pretty good.
Next, our non-resident pupil minutes in summer of 2016 were 12,000. We jumped up to 231,000 minutes for our non-residents. So even if we don't get quite as much financial benefit, we've reached all of those kids. And I noticed that our open enrollment grew at the middle school, I don't know if that had something to do with it, but it does promote goodwill. Online course minutes, those courses, there were no online courses last year. We were able to implement some online agricultural courses with Derek Meyer leading that and added over 33,000 minutes in that regard. The summer full-time equivalency, FTEs, and if you would have asked me a year ago what an FTE was, it would have been my best guess. But in summer of 2016, we had 77.8, and this year we had 91.6, raising 13.8 points, so that will be of a benefit to our district.
If I could just add to that, 48,600 instructional minutes in summer equals one FTE. How many? 48,600. And the DPI lifted the ceiling on the number of hours of instruction per student just a year and a half ago, and so our district's taken advantage of that with the summer school days, with our jump start in early August, with our August start date, and already doubled the numbers last year of FTEs, which is a huge bump up for revenue as well as doing what's best for students. Ms. Shogren's done a tremendous job with our summer school.
Let's take a look at some of the reasons for growth. Now, I will say that I've been a part of summer school for many, many years, and I have felt that we have been able to offer a wonderful program, both on the academic end and the enrichment end, for our kids for so long. What made this year perhaps even more successful? We did implement summer preschool for students entering 4K that was expanded from a one-week session to all three weeks. It was really interesting to see these kids grow and blossom. We had kids who were really shy and timid in that first week. By the end, they were running up and hugging their teacher and having a lot of fun, and boy, they could tell you where they had to stand in the bus line, and they would correct some of those big kids along the way. some of those big kids along the way. We also had addition of enrichment courses in the August session. This was a gamble that I did this past summer. I didn't know if kids would be interested, and we were able to fill classes quite well. We had quite a few extra kids in in August. We had the addition of the online agricultural courses, as I mentioned. We had the development of summer fun and fitness course, opposite swim lessons. We were able to turn free time into instruction. So as soon as we got to the New Richmond Center, we realized that the playground, that I was told that they could have their, you know, we have half the kids in the pool and half of the kids with a free time, the playground had disappeared. So that first day was interesting. Did you hear the quotation marks around "interesting"? So that day, I went back to the Leon office, and I said, "We've got to come up with something that's structured." So I developed a program of summer fun and fitness, and so instead of just having free time, the kids learned the old-fashioned jump rope games. They learned how to play jacks. They learned how to do Chinese jump rope, all of those things that we used to entertain ourselves with before we had screens. We also had a change in DPI policy regarding band performances, and those performances can now be counted as instructional minutes. I'm sure Mr. Boyd can say, yes, there is instruction that happens there and on the bus. We also had the re-establishment of Pioneer School, which was really exciting. We had a three-generation group of teachers who took the kids back in time. And where we're going for next year? We have, the theme is going to be "Summer Brain Gain," and this is going to be our logo. Some improvements and plans for this coming summer. I have already established our swim lessons dates. I was able to do that in August. We will have Session One in early part of July, and that will be from 10 to 11:30 a.m. Session Two will also be in July, same time. This earlier time is going to make the summer lunch program so much easier. The kids will be arriving back at Leon a half an hour earlier, and it won't be a mad scramble to get those kids through the line. And it also won't be kids saying, "Well, there's just not enough time." So I think that that will be a boon to that program. Also, we, I plan to explain the summer fun and fitness class in the catalog description this year. That didn't exist when the catalog first came out, but I'll make sure that that's a clear part of that. And as we plan ahead for swimming lessons, it's essential that we ensure that there are always leaders of both genders. We found that during one of our two sessions, all of the leaders were ladies, and they were wonderful ladies who did a great job, but they couldn't go into the boys' locker room. And frankly, that was Armageddon. So we need to, we need to make sure, and we had injuries as a result. So it's going to be essential, I know we can't usually say, "Well, we have to have a man," but for safety, we're going to have to make sure that that happens. Okay, registration improvements. The registration online system is great. Learning the first time through had, I have copious notes of what to do differently next year. We definitely need to add Clubhouse as a transportation request, because that was sometimes a game of "Where's Waldo?" and we don't want to play that. We need, also need to add resident or non-resident as a part of the registration process. That will, that will shave off hours and hours and hours of my time as I prepare DPI reports. So it's really clear who is a part of our community and who is a welcome guest of our community. We also need to make grade levels more clear. Frankly, when, when parents are registering their kids for some summer school, some of them are thinking, "Well, my kid who just finished fourth grade is a fourth grader." Some kids, something, "Oh, this kid is a fifth grader." So I think that making that a little bit more clear will clear up the, "Oh, your child actually has to be in this class" problem. We also need to establish very firm arrival times for our students with the parents. I found that quite often I would have wee little tots up through eighth graders arriving 30 to 45 minutes early. I can understand because we're wonderful and this is where they want to be. But when a child shows up at 7:15, there's, there's no one designated to take care of them. And so it's very important that parents understand that for their safety, they need to have a certain drop-off time, and when breakfast is served is a great time for them to arrive. I'd also like to consider some special education support or becoming more clear on that. We, of course, need to make sure that summer school is universally accessible to all kids. We need to make sure that our students with special needs succeed well. We found that, you know, so many of our special education students just excelled wonderfully. They made great gains. We did find that several students, though, did struggle significantly. And we don't have a designated special education staff during the summertime. So I became special ed teacher, and that was actually a period of growth for me. I learned a lot from these kids. We did have four who, because of parent choice, terminated their attendance during these sessions. So we'll need to do some brainstorming to see what we can do to make our kids really successful and support them as they need. Let's see. For the next, for next summer, we need to discuss fees. This summer, we had a gracious donor who took care of all of the summer fees, and it was wonderful. You know, if a child added a class, it wasn't a mad scramble to collect those fees. If families ended up out of town, it wasn't making sure that we make the payback to those families. So we'll have to take a look and see if that might be possible to continue for the district to provide this to the children. Also, expansion, I would like to investigate the possibility of, we had some children who were attending the pre-K summer fund in August and summer kindergarten in August, and some of those kids and some of those parents were eager to continue that in August as well. So I'd like to put out a survey to those people who would be involved and see if that would be something they'd be interested in, either for one or two weeks in August. I've been looking into possibilities for drama camps in the afternoons with the Amory Arts Alliance. And Supra Karen Bagley, who has a business downtown with STEM camps, I'd like to check with her as well to see if students could have lunch at school and then move on to an afternoon of learning there that I could oversee, and we could include those minutes as well. If you have any questions, I'll see what I can do. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, now our informational items. Mrs. Meyer.
Okay, this evening, the administrative team is going to give a little PowerPoint presentation on our school district academic performance. And I'm going to begin with the elementary school. And the first slide, I promised Mr. Cookeday I would not read it to you, but basically what it is showing is that the elementary school doesn't participate in a forward exam. We do our, we're alternate assessments, so every spring I have to fill out a form stating what we are doing to assess our children and progress monitor our children. And so that's what this slide says. So I'm going to take time to explain the very first slide, and then from there, I'll just talk through them. But basically, I'm going to report in the area of reading on two assessments that we do. We do the Ames Web Plus assessment for early literacy, and we also do Fountas and Pannell. And so they are both administered three times annually, so fall, winter, and spring. They're nationally normed, the Ames Web, and it's a screening tool that we use for progress monitoring and basically for helping teachers provide instruction for kids, like what do kids need next. So what you see up here is our key over to the right talks about well below average, below average, and et cetera. And it's color-coded, and what our goal is at the elementary school is that 80% of our children fall at or above the 25th percentile. So on here, you're going to see the fall and the spring, and we're hoping to move kids from right, from left to right on the graph, okay? And the things that you should pay attention to in each one of these slides is the percent of children below and above the 25th percentile in the fall, and the percent of children below and above the 25th percentile in the spring. And then what I did is I just gave an increase based on the number of, the percentage of kids above the 25th percentile. So this is showing kindergarten, and you can see that overall, in the fall, we were 61, 62.1% above the 25th percentile in early literacy. In the spring, we were 91.6% above the 25th percentile with a 29.5% increase. Kindergarten does a lot with skill development, individual skills. Next slide is Fountas and Pannell, and that is a benchmark assessment system, a little bit more subjective, but basically it works on oral reading fluency with our children. So same way, I'm showing you above and below the grade level in the fall and in the spring and in the, and the increase of 61, 3.1%. And I don't know if you noticed, but both early, the Ames test for kindergarten and the Fountas and Pannell ended up 91.6% above grade level. So meaning, both of those assessments were pretty close in assessing our children. So moving on then to first grade. First grade assesses oral reading fluency. First grade is always our difficult grade, because we're taking children from skill development to actually putting that, those skills into reading and comprehension. And if you recall, by the end, our goal is by the end of third grade, all children being able to read. So this is their first year where they're putting skills into oral reading fluency. So you can see they had a nice growth of 19.7%, but our overall goal is 80% of our kids above the 25th percentile. And you can see here that we're at 63.7% of our kids above the 25th percentile. So a little work to do. Moving on to Fountas and Pannell, 65% above the grade level at the beginning of the year, 70 at the end of the year, an increase of 5%. Might not seem like a lot, but in first grade, there's a lot of learning that takes place in putting that together, skills, in putting their skills together. Second grade, it always seems to come together for us. Again, 60% above the grade level, 82%, an increase of 22% in Ames. And in the benchmark system, 67.3% above grade level, 80.4 above grade level, an increase of 13.1%. Then we move into math. Same type of information, graph done the same way. Our math is really looking good at the elementary school, which we're all happy about, because we've been struggling with that a little bit at the state level. And so you can see with early numeracy in kindergarten, 66.9% above in the fall, 91.5% above in the spring, an increase of 24.6%. In first grade, 76.7% to 86.9%, an increase of 10.2%. And in math, 76% above, 92% above, 16% increase. I would like to note that this particular grade level has the highest percentage of free and reduced lunch, low socioeconomic group, and EEN. So I think we did very well. I'm happy about it. So we're going to celebrate, or we're going to share with you celebrations. We're going to celebrate or share with you what are some of the interventions we did, and then what's next. So, celebrations in, at the elementary school, so I don't have to keep turning, I'm going to flip my slides here. In reading, grades K and II increase the percent of students scoring above the 25th percentile. And in kindergarten and second grade, we met our goal of 80% or more above, and the, and all three grade levels did increase the amount of kids scoring above the 25th percentile. And same thing in math, K through 2, increase the percent of students scoring above the 25th percentile. And grades K and II, we well exceeded our goal of 80% or more scoring above the 25th percentile. Some areas of focus, I'm not going to read it all to you, I'll just go through this part quickly, but a lot of things that we did to help kids be successful. We implemented Ames Web Plus, which was very efficient for our staff. We implemented a block schedule at the elementary school, professional learning communities, you've heard a lot about them, and you'll continue to hear about them, because that's how we function now. We are, we adopted what the WIN period, which is the intervention block, which is basically what I need now for all kids, not just our low kids. We have, we've looked at our staff and tried to figure out how we can use them more efficiently, including our Title I staff and our paraeducators. We listened to the individual needs of our grade level teachers. Providing the block schedule for them gave them an opportunity to collaborate and gave me an opportunity to meet with them and hear what they have to say about their individual situations. And we adjusted schedules drastically throughout the year. We also, thank you to the board, implemented a behavior and academic position that provides support to our students. We increased math instructional time. And we also implemented a software, a math software program called Dreambox, and, which is a fun game way of learning math, and we do believe it had impact on our math scores. So what next? What are we going to do next at the elementary school? So for this coming year, we adjusted the block schedule so that everybody K1 and II had math and reading in the morning. We changed the service model of our Title I and EEN staff, and we continue to collaborate to see how we can meet the needs of those children. We create, and we're in the process of creating partnerships with our Amory Public Library. We want to increase, we have an amazing public library, and we want to include, increase the amount of children that take advantage of that library. So we are working very closely with Jerissa, and she's collaborating with our staff to do some of the fun things that we've got, that I'll report on at later times. I implemented a professional learning community, leadership committee that meets monthly to help drive that whole initiative. We have individual PLC teams. We're working on Tier Two of PBIS, Professional Behavior Intervention and Support. We're creating a pacing guide for our reading language arts program to make it our curriculum guaranteed and viable. And as Ms. Shock said, November 3rd, we're going to learn more about formative assessments. And the whole idea behind formative assessments is having all students learn those essential skills that we are implementing across our grade level. That's my part. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, on to the intermediate school. And we do have the forward exam, and that's the first scores that should come up. And we have reading language arts, which celebrates some very nice scores for our third, fourth, and fifth graders. Next slide is math. And also, we had a couple of really nice, strong scores. We still are below the state average in the, on that third grade test, and we're working on that. Last year, that was 3.8 below, and this year, we just barely made it below. So that is definitely one of the things that we continue to work on. Science, excellent scores there, and social studies as well. And then this is how we did in comparison to the middle border. The state average is on the end, and as you can see, each one of the middle border schools. That's reading language arts, and then we have math. And New Richmond really took a big jump ahead of lots of us, so we're going to look into that. And then we also, that is the state test, but we also do benchmarking three times a year. And this is our STAR math score. And an SGP, here's another little acronym for you, you know, we have a ton of them, but this is Student Growth Percentile. And because it, the STAR test is a test that is taken all across the United States.
And because it, the STAR test is a test that is taken all across the United States, they take students in the fall and in the spring, they take their score that they get and they've averaged them over all these years, many different kids. That says if a child begins the fall at this certain level, they should, with all the nice water and sun and everything that we put into them, that they should grow a certain amount. And that's called a student growth percentile. And as you can see, we do very well with our students making their student growth percentile. That is in reading. And then we have math coming up next. And we, very same thing, and we actually, there is that third grade class that a year ago was 3.8 below the state average. Our fourth grade's teachers really worked hard with those kids and did a nice job on the, on the math one, the next one. Yep. That 80% of our kids made their growth. Okay, celebrations. Definitely want to celebrate that that third grade score is above the state average and that our fifth grade scores were 17 points above. And then in reading, our fifth grade scores 21 points above. So that was very nice. As far as next steps or area of focus, one of the big things that we're looking at this year is researching, investigate, investigating, and then choosing a new math curriculum. And of course, that's very important to me because of those math scores. So we want to make sure that we're analyzing our data, we're implementing our PLCs and also the PBIS, just as Cheryl has already explained to you. Next steps for us is all about curriculum. We've had Chris in, she trained us on essential standards. We've set those essential standards. Now we're creating pacing guides to make sure that they fit within the year because if they don't, we can't have a viable curriculum. And then she'll be back on November 3rd to help us with those assessments. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I just have one question. So on the math curriculum, is that a 2018 goal to have the new curriculum in place then?
We would purchase it, we actually asked for an extra year. So we're looking at it this year and then we'll, by the April of next year, we will be giving you a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah. K through 5.
At the middle school and high school, we just made a purchasing decision on math curriculum and are implementing it for our first year, which has had some growth challenges for us at the middle school because most of it's online and adjusting. It's kind of interesting. At the middle school, my data and charts can look real similar to Ms. Schock's. But the first one you're going to see is the forward exam this year on English Language Arts. I want to come back to that sixth grade score in a minute. That's probably our biggest area of concern right now, that the sixth grade English Language Arts score came in just a point three above. When you can see the other two grades, I had one up at 21 percentage points above the state average. We averaged about 8.5 primarily because that sixth grade score held us back. The concern, I look at it though, is that if you look at the next score, our sixth graders outperformed everyone else pretty much or very close to in math. And so I'll come back on some of my concerns and what I think about that. But you can see there again in math, we scored between 9.5 to 14.7 percentage points above the state average in math. And then science and social studies are the next ones. And we did extremely well there in science, scoring 28 percentage points above the state average and just under 19 in social studies. So we were very happy with the achievement. If you look at the next scores, it's where we fell in the middle border in English Language Arts, kind of in the middle there. And, and math is the, is the next one on the middle border. Kind of coming back and talking a little about some concerns we have with specific grades, there is one class that we have been tracking for years. That's a class that has had some significant struggles when we assess them on the state test. I wanted to show you, I have a couple of different charts, but I just pulled one of them. This is a growth over time for this specific class. And one of the things we were happy with is you can see where they scored in third grade versus fourth grade on, on up until when they took the test this last year in seventh grade. And so even though I'm concerned with their performance being significantly lower than what we are used to and what we have been seeing, we're very pleased though to see that they have been growing and consistently growing and have not only reached the state level, but then surpassing the students in the state level. And so kind of when we're talked about that growth, that value-added growth has come in to play for us. So we're pleased to see that. Celebrations at the middle school level. Again, there were, there was some high achievement. Students made low-level achievement for the most areas, 10 to 8, 10 to 28 points above the state average. That value-added growth, what we found is if you took all the grades and you took an average of math and, and reading, we scored a value-added growth score of 71.8 versus 66 percentage on the state level. What that means is that they know exactly where our kids came from. They know based on their free and reduced status, based on their score the year before, based on their disabilities, whatever it may be on that child, it's broken down by each specific student and then you get a mean average. They, they know exactly where we should go if we just had normal growth and we had exceptionally good growth, significantly higher growth. And so the kids are moving forward at a, at a higher speed than their peers in the state. Areas of focus, the sixth grade ELA score, being point three above the state average, but then 14.5 in math, talks to me about a disconnect mostly on the score. That's typically not seen to that level and not at the middle school. I've never seen that before in my almost 20 years. I'm concerned that it's curriculum-based, meaning that, to be honest, we have a new assessment. We're in, we're the second year of the forward test. Sometimes those tests, by the way, those charts I was showing you, we went from the WKC to the Badger to the Forward. We're really struggling on making comparisons over time because you're on third assessment in four years and it's been, every one of them is normed differently. Another thing I wanted you to consider too, is that when you look at their, from grade level to grade level to grade level, even on test to test, every one of them, the, what you need to score, their scale score you need to meet proficiency is different. They're all set independently. So you can't say, oh, third grade is at 60% and then fifth grade is only at 40%, but you can't compare. You can only compare the difference between them in the state or them in the, or other schools than the same grade level. But I would see that, I was concerned about that being a disconnect to see such a broad difference between how we did versus the state. Not only that was a new assessment, but also two brand-new teachers in the sixth grade level. I'm just concerned that perhaps we need to take a look at what exactly was taught based on the standards to make sure that we're not assessing kids on something that they weren't taught on to that level. I hope that makes sense, but that's a big thing that we're digging into. Next steps, again, we're going to be attending a district-wide data retreat, all four schools, various representatives coming in, and Chris Stratton's coming in to help us with that. And we're going to be studying our data. We're going to pinpoint areas of improvement across the board, K-12, and set goals. And that should be coming in just a month. Or talked about the PLCs and Cheryl as well, about identifying those essential standards. The nice thing about that is that you're pinpointing exactly what the kids need to know, then you're doing common formative assessments and then interacting or intervening on kids that don't meet that essential standard. So we're excited to see how that will play out. But then taking that, that PLC team to where the real value is as far as taking them down and having those teams and increasing time for them to look at that data and do their own data digs, not just this big district-wide one, individual data digs, making database decisions on how they can change their curriculum on a daily basis. The strength of assessment would be, you look at it, you try to figure out why something is happening and you intervene and change it rather than just be, you know, sit there and just repeat the same thing over and over. In fact, our sixth grade team on this Friday is digging into that ELA score. I provided them with multiple, multiple data charts to look at. You know what I am with my data charts. And they're going to be going through and we're working on trying to figure out why that score was there, what area, breaking the ELA down to what specific area it was, and then how we're going to intervene so that this sixth grade won't have the same experience. And then obviously the PBIS interventions and supports for behavior is also a goal and a next step. And people may say, well, what does behavioral charts and behavioral interventions have to do with learning? But we all know if a student isn't behaving well in school, or if someone else isn't behaving well in school and interacts or interferes with the learning of other students, all of that plays out. And if kids don't come to school feel safe or supported, they're not going to score as well on any type of an assessment. So that's an important portion as well. That's middle school. We have some work to do and I'm going to turn it over to...
I hate this, add more data. But you know, I was reflecting on the enrollment, the chart that we had here, and, and we had some classes that were low numbers.
Yeah.
You know, when you're looking at the grade level, we don't see how many kids are in that group. And, and of course, if you have a low number, each kid and, you know, each student is going to impact that percentage more. And I, you know, I'm just...
Right.
If, you know, there's a way that you track those student numbers with those grade levels to see how they affect the percentages.
Mean whether a bigger class or a smaller class?
Right.
Well, I, you know, when we're hovering around 120 to 130 kids a class.
I know there's one in there that's only like 90.
We have nine, well, we at one point had like 99 in our senior class too.
And I was like, okay, they're, they're the one, they're the ones that are going to be impacting a percentage.
Right. I have, I have been looking at scores for a long time and I've seen a school that has gone like that with, you know, maybe only had about 40 kids in their school and they've gone from like 90% proficient down to like 30 in, in one year. Just because a small number of kids really skew things. The other big change in it, what's happened is with the changing of the test, they moved the test from the fall, we used to test in the fall to the spring. And so now students consider full academic year if they're coming in here in, even after the school year started, if we get them by that Friday count. We don't have kids for a full year when we assess them and that's hard. The year before, when we tested, well, they had to start and then we had a whole year and then they would test. So we knew we had those kids for over a year. Sometimes that can make a big difference. I know I've added almost 28 kids at the middle school this year. Be interesting to see how they do and, you know, they're not, they're new to us and we're going to, we're really working hard with every new student to make sure that we do as well as we can.
A lot of information on that first slide. This is where our students tend to go to school over the course of time from 2007 through 2017. And what I'd like you to note here is that we have generally the same number of kids that are going to a four-year school each year and generally the same number that's going to a two-year. But the last column there is a very telling mark because now we're to the point where every single kid is at least making a declaration. There were years back in 2007 and 2008 where about 75% of kids are making a declaration of a two and four year. Now everybody is. And that's a huge accomplishment for us. The ACT Aspire given to ninth graders and 10th graders. The ACT Aspire is given in the categories of English, math, reading, science, and writing. Mirrors the ACT, obviously. We have been above state average for the last, we've only given it for two years and tracked that, or three years, and we've only tracked that data for three years. We are consistently above state average with ninth grade and with 10th grade in all five of those areas.
All five?
All. One, two, three, four, four of five. Almost. Good eye. Okay. You're good. On the ACT, these are our subject scores this last time around, given on February 28th. We had an ACT first place finish in the CISA and four of the five, again math, we were second. These scores were in most cases significantly ahead of the remainder of the CISA. For instance, in science, second place in the CISA was 22 even. We were at 23.3. That is a credit to not just what's happening at the high school, it's a credit to what's happening in K-12 because you don't just show up as a junior and get smart all of a sudden. If that was the case, we would all wait over a junior year then get smart. Keith's still waiting, so.
Hey, I know.
In the middle border conference, over the course of time, we have one new school, St. Christ Central, as of a couple of years ago when Duran was out. We are from state average, slightly above Prescott and St. Christ Central, but we are the only school that's had of not only state average, but also national average on the ACT. And this runs back just to 2014 because remember, that's when every single student in the junior class took it. Prior to that, it was about 45%. Now it's 100%. College and career readiness, college, colleges look at this very intently. And what, what I would like to show you is the far right versus all four, we had 40% of our students, nearly a half, that were college and career ready to do college and career-ready work in all four of those areas, English, math, reading, and science. And we were well ahead of the state average when you look at each of the areas and well ahead of our performance in 2016 and in 2015. So I'll use a Hunter Marco reference. When I talked to him about his prospects after his freshman year of winning a state championship, he said to me, well, this is what University of Wisconsin-Madison and also the University of Minnesota told me, do it again. So that's our goal, do it again. In the state of Wisconsin, and Jim's going to fly these schools in, he really likes this effect, it's very much a good deal. You can go faster next, you've got 25 of them. This is the top 25 in the state in that order, in the order of first through 25th, and you're starting to see a trend. If not, you need to go to your optometrist. Beecher is an example, we'll keep us talking about Beecher as 16 test takers. So there were a couple of smarties in that particular bunch. We are, along with Eau Claire Memorial, the only schools in the top 25 in this part of the state. And Memorial did not beat us, they tied us. So I would like to make that reference. So geographically, it's very clear. We also look very different than the rest of the state in regards to free and reduced population. 29% of this class was free and reduced. The only other school above 15% was Plattville at 25. And if you've ever been to Kohler, they were zero, which is what it is. So we did very well, 21st out of 5, 46. That was our, I don't have a slide titled celebrations. Cheryl Meyer said she will help me get one with the dancing elves or sometime. Next, I'm going to put that up there. Slides are not my strength. In the CISA 11, we were in the top 10, obviously, first, ahead of the likes of Hudson and River Falls. Those are always the benchmarks after our particular conference. Hudson obviously has done well for a very long time and River Falls is a college town and they certainly have done well as well. In the area of the AP, this would be our second area of celebration. We have made a concerted effort to increase the number of test takers. We've gone from the teens, the twenties, and the thirties to 96 two years ago, 72 last year, and we will be over 100 this year, most likely, probably up towards 110, 115. But at the same time, our pass rate has slightly dropped. But if you look at the next bit of information, we are still the only school in the conference that has state and national average on passing AP tests. That's what even more kids taking it. And that's a very telling sign of the strength of our curriculum. Again, K-12, you don't just show up as a senior and get smart and take the AP exams and pass them. It's a, a pretty significant achievement. This is an area of concern for us. These are our college dropout rates, actual kids all the way back to 2007. I can't track 13 because they haven't yet finished. They're probably finishing soon. But these are our kids. These are the percentage of kids that have dropped out. The first column are males, the second column are females, the percentage of our kids, Amory grads that go off to college and do not finish. And the way that I know that, you can and Wise Dash go and track every kid, where they went, what their major was, and did they finish. And when they stop appearing, that means they dropped out, they didn't finish.
How does that compare to a national average?
Lower, which is shocking. This is much lower.
Much lower than the national average?
Much lower than the national average, significantly lower.
But there's no way to track if this is college, obviously, four-year and they went and dropped out.
Well, you can track wherever they went. What the trends that we see are, and I've talked to high school staff about this, they don't start at all and then they pop up two or three years after graduation. And that's, they've, they've basically reached the ceiling in their job and they needed a certification via a college diploma. Kids that go to four-year disappear and come back two-year, and kids that go to four-year and finish.
Are there any schools across, I don't know, maybe this is a totally weird idea, but are there any schools that support their graduates through whatever mentoring or whatever, after they've left their school district?
None that I'm aware of, but I love the idea. What, what colleges...
I don't even know how, but you know what I mean?
I do. What colleges are reporting the single biggest reason why students are not succeeding when they go to college is study skills. We've got a lot of students that are leaving here with excellent grade point averages and, and very good ACT scores, but they've never learned how to study and there's no one there to get them to do that.
Yeah, and I got to believe that we've got, overall, most of our kids go within a geographic proximity here. a geographic proximity here.
From Eau Claire to Minnesota.
So I just, I don't know if that's even something that can be done, you know, even if it's studying, maybe it's, you know, supporting their home on weekends or things like that. I don't know, it just seems to me like that would be a good service.
Absolutely, this is a tough not to crack, because this isn't just us.
Yeah, no, I, it seems like it's a hole that needs to be filled.
Absolutely, nationwide.
I did, I did some studying on this one a couple of years back, and I know that, you know, you have about half your kids typically are nationwide are going onto a four-year school, but only two, approximately a little over two out of ten are ever finishing. When my dad was president of Middie State, the average age of a student there was twenty-eight years old. So what happened those ten years? And I think one of the biggest strengths that schools have done is trying to get those kids better connected into what those careers are and how, what those schools look like, and making that a very feasible option for students. And we have a wealth of great programs right here in WITC, one of the strongest technical schools in the country with great things. And I also think, too, we've been bringing our eighth graders to college visits every year, and that's really been a good thing. It's been a great exposure for them just to see what those schools look like and walking into the programs. And I think that really helps them to understand the importance of post-secondary ed. And then you go on with what Sean's doing with academic and career, well, district-wide, but the high school's new plan.
Right, which is why we changed our conferences model.
Yeah.
Academic career plan, we want kids to think about what do they want to do next.
Right.
And we increased our attendance rate at conferences from twenty percent to sixty percent.
So then is your opinion that this problem, which obviously is national, is a statement on the, on the high schools, or is it a statement on the universities?
I think it's both. I think it's both, but I think we definitely have a part to play. Are we preparing our kids? That's one thing, but are you preparing them, pointing them in the right direction with the necessary resources? The second part, we haven't done nearly well enough at, which is why it's a mandate from the state and which why we're embracing it. It's very important.
I think you're going to see tremendous improvements in that just by those academic career plans. And I think turning kids on to the right school, the right place, understanding exactly what they're getting into.
And I get it. I'm a college dropout. I dropped out my freshman year. Kids love hearing that, so I'll tell the public. I went and finished, I'll also tell them that, too.
Lots of people go to school for seven years, they're called doctors.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, absolutely true. So I understand. Our, our plan for the future, our action plan is for improvement on the ACT. I don't know where to set the benchmark for this year's test takers, they've got a high bar. Well, I think they're capable of that. We'll talk more about that when we get to that point. We're going to put together a plan for prepping our kids. That was one of our most beneficial areas, is we actually gave them the ACT test prep in the real time, real questions, and we found out where they sat. And then we created test groups for the kids that scored certain scores at each of the tests, and we use our instructors to prep them, better than any online or any ACT resource we'd ever have. We did it right in-house, and we did it for the better part of a month. And we incentivized the heck out of it. And if it's going to be this important, then let's go ahead and make sure they understand that it is, because after all, it's a free reportable score for them. So use it for free. So we did very well, and we're proud to say we did.
When I was at the WASB thing that I was at a couple of weeks ago for the weekend, I had two different board members from two different districts in our CISA come up and ask me, what's your trick with the ACT? Which I thought was great, it means that they've noticed as well. My answer was, we have smart kids, send your kids over to us, but they didn't appreciate that totally, but.
I've gotten calls from other places in the state as well.
Yeah, and I thought that was a great, you know, a great testament to just what a bunch of a big deal.
And I'll say this as a complete aside, I know we've got agenda to get to and so forth. I've done some work down, and I know some folks down in Hudson, and Hudson was second in the CISA, and I'm waiting for my opportune moment to ask them who finished first.
Yeah.
I think it'll come up.
Ride the wave.
I think it'll come up at some point.
Take it while you can.
Any questions for me?
Thank you. And great job on that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention again, this is part of our strategic plan update, the Student Achievement Subcommittee, and I wanted to mention that I believe the strength of our district lies in front of you, so I want to say thank you, Dr. Dierflehr, Mr. Benson, Ms. Shock, Ms. Meyer, and Ms. Wesley, because truly, our student achievement, there's nothing more important in our district than our student achievement. And they've led all of our staff, and I like Mr. Dr. Dierflehr's comments about this being recognition of everything that's being done by our district, not just at the high school level. So great job. Now if I can figure out this, to get back to our agenda.
I know with my kids in school, the problem was is they didn't go ask questions and visit people when they were in college. They'd call dad or mom, and I'd say, I don't know, you need to go talk to the people, talk to your professors and that.
We're seeking to educate parents, too, because parents are walking in the dark on this, because things have changed since they were in college, by all means.
But I think one thing for us, though, is the one-on-one. I noticed that with mine, I mean, when they get to college, this is it. I mean, and if they can maneuver it and that, and we know school districts that are struggling technology-wise, it's a leg up.
You're signing back on to Board Book? In that case, let's, we can move, I can move a couple of things while you sign on, okay? We can, if we're all right with that, I'd like to move the youth options request, just and take that out while we get the Board Book out.
Okay, I'm here this evening to ask for your permission for five students, three WITC in Richmond, two UW River Falls, to do youth options work, sixty credits total in the spring of 2018. They have met all the requirements to do so, and I'm here to ask your permission for them to do that in the spring.
Can I get a motion for that? In a second, Dale?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
Yep. Let me see, we can, um, yeah, we need Board Book for that. Let's do the, we can do the short-term borrowing, do we need that up on Board Book? I mean, we're able to see everything here, so.
Right.
You want to take the?
Okay, short-term borrowing. This is basically, I'll defer to Ms. Suckin', but it's essentially annual short-term borrowing for when we receive aid and when our cash flow is in need of a small amount. It's closely monitored, and so there's a lot of papers in front of me to sign for short-term borrowing, which we've typically done every year, the past couple of years. Anything to add to that?
Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Chelsea, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Okay, we can, you know, if it doesn't go up on the screen, we've got it.
We got it.
So this is, that's-
Yeah, I'm reading it.
We're all looking at it here, so if you want to move up.
It's just that I was in PowerPoint so long that it had-
It locked, AI, no, I get it. So you're not in the places where the kickers are, but we are, so you can just follow.
Action items, youth options?
Yeah, we already did all that.
Okay, and teacher, okay, so teacher compensation?
No, I want to go back up, I'm sorry.
So what do you want to go to?
Now we're back up at informational items, the levy chart with the defecence, which we're all looking at right now.
All right. And so here it is on your screen. And what I want to point out is, this is the last few years, our actual budget and levy. And as you can see, just move it up slightly, 2013, yeah, thirteen fourteen, the actual levy was eleven point nine four. Two thousand fourteen, fifteen, eleven point nine two. So slight decrease, another slight decrease a year ago, fifteen, sixteen, and then the actual budget last year, the levy was, again, a slight decrease down to eleven point one eight or eleven point one seven nine, something out a long ways. This current year, we're looking at a two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar defecence, and a defecence is like paying your mortgage early, it's simply paying off additional loan. So this year's budget, seventeen eighteen, is estimated to be with the one point nine million-dollar referendum, with two hundred thousand in defecence, and with the energy efficiency resolution passed last month for three hundred forty thousand dollars. We're still looking at a slight decrease in our mill rate from eleven point one eight to eleven point one four. And here would be a projection, and working with Baird, for next year, we could do to maintain about the same mill rate, we would be able to do a defecence of five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and that would shorten the window for the following year and allow our mill rate to drop considerably, and we would have an amount to fill in, which we would be talking about future referendum then for facilities as needed. So that would be in nineteen twenty. So this is a defecence assumptions and projection that's completed by Baird, our consulting firm, our financial consultants for the school district. I wanted to share this information just as a finance update for the board and for the public.
Okay, so let me see, we can now move on to teacher compensation, because we already did action item A, so it's going to be compensation.
Okay, so teacher compensation.
Does Keith want that, or? Well, he has the numbers there. Okay, go ahead.
In June, the board, not knowing what the financial status would be with the biennial budget, passed a six hundred dollar supplemental pay increase for those teachers that were not in the first levels, the A, B, and C teachers, or for those that were not moving from one level to another. So that supplemental pay passed in June, and we said we would revisit it, was six hundred dollars. And so we had discussed, Keith and Dale and I had met and talked about the possibility of moving that up from six hundred to a thousand, so an additional four hundred dollars. And Ms. Suckin' and I have talked since last summer about the budget. We actually have in the current budget that thousand-dollar supplemental pay, and that would be for sixty-four teachers, technically sixty-three point seven five FTEs. And that supplemental pay is paid in December and in January of this fiscal year. And the cost to the district for the sixty-three point seven five teachers, times that additional four hundred dollars, would be twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. But there was one teacher that we had hired who left before the school year started, and the difference in the pay, at least for first semester, would be about nineteen thousand dollars difference. So the actual impact to the district would only be about sixty-five hundred dollars. Dale or Keith?
In this, and I guess from when we talked about this, a couple of reasons why reviewing it, one, is kind of, I guess, maybe a reward for our great student achievement. And also, we want to stay competitive with our teachers' compensation, and it is something we need to be, stay on top of and even be reviewing as we go ahead here in the next year, so this will help.
Another thing, I guess, I'd like to add is had we had the board decided to just put money on the salary schedule due to catch-up pay and the transition or migration from the old step and lane movement, had a thousand dollars simply been put on that, then all of those teachers that had catch-up pay simply would get no increase. In fact, they'd get about a six hundred dollar decrease, because supplemental pay is from year to year. There's no guarantee. So they would have lost that supplemental pay and received no additional money, because in some cases supplemental pay is a thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. So by adding to this supplemental pay, it's actually a real dollar increase for all of those sixty-some teachers that are not moving.
Can I get a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dale, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, post? Okay, that's done.
Next, let's go to the, we did, yeah, search our borrowing.
All right, the twenty seventeen eighteen budget levy and mill rate.
And I'll turn that over to Mr. Cook. It's basically what we just, we're seeing, shown, but this is a little more in-depth.
Yep, so what we have is last year's nine point four, plus almost nine and a half million-dollar levy, and this year's levy, an increase of a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in the levy. Incidentally, over fifty percent of the revenue is generated from state aid, and just under fifty percent is from the tax levy. So as promised, the mill rate would not increase. We actually have a very slight decrease in our mill rate from last year to this year. And if we decrease that drastically, just let it drop, then we would lose that much, over half of it actually in aid. So it's wise to keep it pretty flat, and that's what the board has planned for, for years, to keep a relatively flat mill rate. Our property values went up a couple of percent, and so there's a slight fluctuation and inverse relationship between property values and mill rate typically. But this, you can take your property value times this decimal and calculate exactly what your tax rate, actually, you cannot do that, I should say, because every municipality is, is at a different rate. So this is the general school district mill rate, which is ten municipalities, and every single municipality is assessed slightly differently, and, but this is a general calculation and used for the entire district.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept that levy and mill rate?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Chelsea, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Just a reiteration of the fact that with the one point nine million-dollar referendum, the mill rate decreased, which is exactly what we said would happen. Actually, we said it'd stay the same, but I'll-
It decreases, okay.
It decreases, okay, yeah. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, post?
Okay. We already approved a budget, right?
Yes.
So that's already done. Next, we did the mill rate, so personnel?
So the board took up personnel in closed session earlier, and I think you'll give that to the newspaper, and we voted to accept all the recommendations of the administration. So with that, we don't need to go into closed session. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?